Jan, Andy.
Do you have a lot of that?
Jan Drouin.
No.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 Mayor, wait, wait. We'll start in a minute and I'm gonna go down and tell Sam to run the intro.
Leland is not here tonight. You gotta do it if they want it.
Documentary, so we have the brand-new equipment here. But Sam from the treasurer's office is running the cable tonight. This is her first time ever running the cable. So hopefully, and this is brand-new equipment, so hopefully everything will go smoothly. If not, I'll let you know, but I just want you guys to know this. Okay, I'm gonna tell her we're ready to go.
Okay.
How's Christine? How you been? My condolences.
I saw that too.
It was just stuff that came up.
Yeah.
And we don't have to worry about it at all because Chris had a test with him and we don't have to.
Oh, no, it's not that, but when you come across them.
Okay, I'd wait like a minute. When Leland's here, we'll actually be able to put ourselves back on that TV as well.
It was, I don't know, stuff to monitor.
Can we see the intro?
You're not gonna see the intro, I don't think.
That would, that would be helpful for.
We will be able to, when Leland's here, we'll be able to do that.
Great.
I'm gonna install a cable box right behind that TV so that TV can flip over.
Super.
Okay, I think you're fine, go ahead.
Call to order, 7:00 PM, City of Hazel Park, City Council Meeting, March 15, 2016. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hureezy.
Here.
Mayor Fortun Eaton.
Excuse.
Councilman McCarroll.
Here.
Councilman Leff.
Here.
Councilman Stone.
Here.
Invocation, pledge of allegiance, please. Stand.
Let us pray. Loving Father, how good you are to us. We thank you for your blessings and your favor on Hazel Park. We are grateful for the leadership team of this city, for our mayor, our city council, city administrators. We thank you for their unity, their vision, their purpose, and their hard work on our behalf. Thank you for our first responders, for our outstanding police and fire departments, and their respective chiefs, both of whom are first-rate leaders. Protect them as they serve this community. We ask your blessings upon these proceedings tonight. Guide the discussions, and may all decisions made be according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda?
Support.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution for responsible spending of transportation funds, southeastern Michigan.
Madam Mayor, the City of Royal Oak and other surrounding communities in our area have requested that the City of Hazel Park pass a resolution opposing the widening of I-75. With your permission, Madam Mayor, I will read into the record this resolution. A resolution for responsible spending of transportation funds in southeastern Michigan. Whereas, communities across southeastern Michigan face an acute shortage of transportation funds to repair existing streets and bridges, address safety needs, and provide the quality of life that attracts and retains residents and employers. And whereas, the City of Hazel Park needs specifically include the repair of existing roads. And whereas, the Michigan Department of Transportation has approved and intends to commence major highway reconstruction and capacity expansion projects on I-75 in Oakland County and I-94 in Detroit, with expected costs that may exceed $4 billion, including hundreds of millions for capacity expansion. And whereas, the 2040 long-range plan states that traffic congestion in southeastern Michigan is limited, that the region will not regain its 2,000 population with the next 25 years, and that any increase in traffic levels will be modest. And whereas, surveys performed by SEMCOG show that a majority of the region's residents do not support raising taxes for the purpose of expanding highway capacity. And whereas, the expansions threaten significant negative impacts to the communities they traverse, including displacement of residents, destruction of local tax base, loss of property value, increases in traffic noise, aggravated air pollution, and continued disinvestment. Whereas, it has been well-established that such road expansions provide only temporary relief while exacerbating traffic congestion in the long run. And whereas, $4 billion would be far better spent addressing our region's desperate need for a comprehensive regional transit system to meet the needs of residents. And whereas, cities across the state are suffering consequences of decades of anti-urban policies such as freeway expansions, which encourage sprawl while decreasing investment in the very population centers where the majority of residents live. And whereas, state law dictates that not only must cities and villages suffer the consequences of these policies, but in fact must bury portion of the cost of opening, widening, and improving state trunk line highways resulting in further deterioration of existing local infrastructure. And whereas, Senate Bill 557 introduced by Senator Nolenberg proposed to eliminate the requirement that Hazel Park and other communities' residents' tax dollars be redirected to a project that harms our community. And therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Hazel Park opposes the inclusion of these highway capacity expansion projects in the 2040 long-range plan. And be it further resolved, the City Council especially opposes the proposed transportation improvement project amendment pertaining to the acceleration of the widening of I-75 between Eight Mile Road and M-59. And be it further resolved, the Hazel Park City Council requests that funding currently programmed for these capacity projects be redirected to other roadway projects, such as performing preventive maintenance and rehabilitating existing major roads, bridges, and local streets, addressing critical safety needs, developing and implementing mass transit, and enhancing the overall quality of life through these measures. And be it further resolved, that the City of Hazel Park supports the passage of Senate Bill 557, which at the very least would end the requirement that Hazel Park residents fund a project that will bring harm to our city. And be it further resolved, this resolution be transmitted to SEMCOG and its member communities, the Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, Governor Rick Snyder, Representative Robert Wittenberg, and Senator Vincent Gregory. Be it finally resolved, the City of Hazel Park hereby adopts this resolution requesting that the two expansion projects be excluded from the 2040 long-range plan and funding redirected toward other needs until such time as the utility is reexamined in the light of current transportation and funding conditions.
Mayor Hureezy.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution as read by the sitting manager.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Servic announcements? Andy's serving announcements? Yes, come on out, please.
Elaine Zach, Oakland County Commissioner, and first of all, I want to thank all of you for passing that resolution. And I would add one thing to it. I would recommend that you send it to our Oakland County Executive, Al Brooks Patterson, in addition, because part of the, is that he is cheering on the expansion of I-75 despite the south end not supporting it.
The south end is almost, is, I've never seen the south end as united on something like this. It's great.
So, thank you. The other piece about this Oakland County, state-of-the-county address is not only did Brooks Patterson tout this, but he failed to mention the issue of regional transit. And we are, I serve on the Citizens Advisory Council, trying to champion this issue. And there are some meetings coming up, the end of March, beginning of April, if people want to go to them. There's one on Tuesday, March 29. The Regional Transit Authority is holding a meeting from 4:00 to 7:00 at Aloft Detroit at the David Whitney Building, which is at One Park Avenue. And they are going to review the three corridor plans that include Woodward, and they want feedback on this, you know, part of the plan. And then there's also an Oakland County, just for the Woodward Corridor meeting, on Saturday, April 2nd, 10:00 to 12:30 PM. And that is at the Crowfoot Ballroom, 1 South Saginaw in Pontiac. And I do encourage people to visit these meetings and give their opinion on the plan. I do want to let you know that Oakland County does have a Zika mosquito virus plan, and they did invite cities to learn about it. We are adding funding to that program, such as we did with the West Nile. It is considered a public health issue, and so Oakland County is going to be funding this education in some plan. I also want to tell you about an opportunity, if I have any high school students or parents of them listening. There is a wonderful program called Leadership Oakland, and this trains leadership of business people throughout our county. But several years ago, they started a Junior Leadership Oakland. And so seniors, I encourage you to apply for this leadership program. You can find the application at www.leadershipoakland.com. The program runs from June 20th to 22nd. And, you know, the mission is, you know, this is for students entering their senior year. It's designed to promote leadership through personal and professional development and community involvement opportunities in southeastern Michigan. And I do know they have a new director of this program. She used to be the leadership development person at Beaumont Health System, and she's just superb. So this is a wonderful opportunity, and I hope some of our high school seniors will decide to apply. That's it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wittenberg, would you, would you like to speak?
I'll leave Robert Wittenberg.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Wittenberg, State Representative. Just wanted to come in to make a couple announcements and also just check in, see if there's anything you need from me. I appreciate you guys passing that resolution. I'm in agreement with you. I wanted to also follow up. We sent out, for you and everyone at home, if everyone got their Madison Park, we had a flyer that went out in that, that had some helpful information about what's upcoming with tax season and just some things that are going on in Lansing. And so want to make sure people are aware of that. If they did not receive it and they put it straight into the recycling bin by chance, which my mom did, didn't even see it. But there are some dates in here. We have some upcoming coffee hours. We had the one here already in Hazel Park, which was, which went really well. We had a nice discussion there with quite a few residents. But the next coffee hour, we have Monday, April 4th, at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center, from 10:30 to noon, and then Tuesday, April 5th, at the Huntington Woods Rec. Center, from 6:30 to 8:00. And also just want to let people know about a town hall that we're hosting on income and tax inequality, which I think is a really important topic to discuss, at Ferndale High School, April 14th, starting at 7:00 PM. So I think that's something worthwhile. And we have a professor from Michigan State University, Charles Ballard, who will be there. So I think it'll, it'll be a really worthwhile event for everyone to attend. So those are some of the upcoming events that I want people to be aware of, and I have a few extras here if anyone, anyone needs any of these. And just to keep you posted on what's going on in Lansing, one of the, you know, the issues that we're gonna be dealing with shortly is the budget. I don't sit on any of the appropriations committees, so I can't tell you kind of where we are specifically. You know, the governor comes out with his recommendation, and that's kind of a wish list more than anything. And obviously has to go through the legislative process before it's actually approved. So I will keep you all apprised of, of kind of how that moves. DPS, what's going on with DPS, I'm sure everyone's kind of aware of that. And that's something we really have to be mindful of, because, you know, our students, it's our state, you know, we, we will provide every, it's part of our constitution, we will provide every student with a, a free public education, a good education here in the state of Michigan. Things in Detroit have gotten really bad, under state control though, and so we have to fix it. But I will make sure that we do not do that at the detriment of Hazel Park students or any other students. So you don't want to help one and then take away from another. So we got to make sure there's a solution that helps everyone. So those are just a couple things. Like I said, I just want to come here just to, to make you aware of what's going on and answer any questions you have. And then, oh, on a personal note, actually, I can, I can talk about it here. Over the weekend, had a, I am getting married in May, and we had a wedding shower at the Hazel Park Raceway, and it was a great event. It was, everyone had a wonderful time. And there was a few people that had never been to the raceway, so I wanted to introduce them to the raceway. So it was a good event, so I just wanted to, to mention that as well while I'm here. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and go over any information you need me to. And again, as always, I'll also leave all my contact information. So if there's ever any questions, any suggestions, any thoughts, any concerns, if there's any, ever, anything that we can do, you know, always feel free to reach out. So maybe I'll do that, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. Again, anyone at home can email me, it's robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. Phone number is 517-373-0478. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But again, just want to come here and check in and say hello and let you know about some of the upcoming events. And I apologize, I'm a little under the weather as well, if you can hear the nasal.
I think a lot of us are. Madam Mayor, I just wanted to tell Robert Wittenberg that you said the right thing that I wanted you to hear when you said, yeah, they have to fix Detroit, but they shouldn't be fixing Detroit at the expense of the other school districts, like the Hazel Park School District.
That's right.
Same thing with the City of Flint. They bought it, they broke it, they need to fix it, but they shouldn't fix it at the expense of communities like Hazel Park and Ferndale and.
Correct.
And Madison Heights and Oak Park. So this is a problem, we need to watch out for this at the state level, that those solutions are coming out of the hide of other local governments that have done nothing wrong, that were not victimized by state takeovers that had disastrous consequences. So.
Yep.
They need to, they or their pet projects may need to suffer for their actions. All of us should not.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing everyone. Thank you. I'll see you. Ah, thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Michael Vanderweer. How are you?
My name is Michael Vanderweer, 23321 Powell Avenue in Hazel Park. I represent Hazel Park Creative Arts. Want to remind everyone that this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening at 7:00 PM at the high school, the Hazel Park Drama Club will present Little Shop of Horrors. From what I understand, it's going to be a very nice production. In association with the Drama Club and the Art Department at the high school and Mabel Gray, we will be holding a night out at Hazel Park High School on Friday night, the 18th, from 5:00 until 6:30 PM. Mabel Gray has donated some soup to the, to the event, and we'll also have some ceramic bowls made by Hazel Park students. All that and a ticket to the play is $15 per person. Or if you don't want to go to the play, which, you know, we certainly hope you would, you can also do just the dinner and the, and the bowl for $10. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello. I'm so happy to see you all. I've missed you all very much. I've had to kind of lay low the past year, because I had sold the Fairy Tale Flowers phone number. So just to avoid any problems, I laid low. So for those of you that don't know me, I am Christine Andress, and I'm the former owner of Fairy Tale Flowers in Hazel Park. And I am proud to announce where I have been. I am at Blooms by JR Designs in Ferndale. We are located at 503 East Nine Mile Road, and I'm here tonight because they are hosting a Welcome Christine event for me on March 24th, next Thursday, from 12:00 to 7:00. It's an open house. We also have these coupons that if you, if you bring this coupon to the open house, it is a buy one, get one free on any and all fresh flowers. So they are gonna serve refreshments, and they just, ah, just want to welcome me and welcome all my past customers and friends and let them know I'm still sad not to be in my beloved city of Hazel Park, but I'm hoping that I can connect my new family and my old family together. I think that would be wonderful. So I would love to see all of you. I would love to see all my former customers. I'll just connect the two cities and see where we can go with that. So, how are you guys been?
Been great.
Great. Yes.
I'm really glad to hear that. So thank you very much, and I will leave some flyers behind for the event.
Good luck to you, Chrissy, and.
I do miss you.
Leave us some business cards or contact information, so we know where to tell people to get their flowers from now.
Hi, guys. Hey. Richard Robbins, 819 East Muir, Hazel Park. Wow, this is loud. Nice, nice, nice little system you got here. I'm speaking up for the Hazel Park Historical Commission. I just wanted to announce that we do have a nice display up on the second floor of the City Hall, and I'd like to see, have everybody come out and take a look at it. If they have the opportunity, come see that, and it can come, it's, it's, the theme is 1942, it's the birth of the city. Basically, next year is going to be the 80th anniversary, so if anybody wants to come, or 75th, excuse me, anybody wants to come up and see that, they can come up and see it. And if anybody in the audience wants to take a look at it, it's right up there as soon as the meeting's over. So that announcement, that was done by Jennifer Burton Jackson. So if anybody wants to see it, it's up there. So I'd like to thank all of you. Have a great day.
Looks great, Rich.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, a big thank you to Jennifer Jackson, who worked very hard on this, and a thank you to all the members of the Historical Commission. We have Richard here, we have Beth Holland here, and we have Chuck Ledoux here as well. So I want to thank all of them for their interest in Hazel Park's history. And again, Jennifer Jackson's been a long time on that, so it looks, looks great.
Good evening, Beth Holland, 305 West Milton. Wow, the new microphone and the camera systems are fantastic. I'm calling, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Animal Control. We are not having our Humane Society Vaccination Clinic this year. However, one of our rescue partners is going to sponsor one on May 1st. We got the green light from City Administration, who are happy to come in on a Sunday, May 1st, from 11:00 till 4:00. The prices will be posted shortly, but pretty much they're gonna be $5 cheaper than the cheapest place around, which is All About Animals. And the rescue partner is PAW. They have been instrumental in the surrendered animals, the cats and dogs that are given over by owners or that are found as strays and finding them new homes, and have been incredibly successful since the new ACO has been hired. So it'll be May 1st, 11:00 to 4:00, and kind of a combination of civic announcements. Lando Arcanine has his own trading cards, and I'm told you can go to the Police Department, ask for Kim, or probably the other officers might help you out too, but they have trading cards for Lando, which have his vitals. He's a very handsome, handsome Dutch shepherd, and I don't want his autograph. I hear he likes to take a bite out of crime. Thank you all so much. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, civic announcements in the audience? How about in here? Anybody has civic announcements?
No.
Actually, I do. So. It's spaghetti time this year. Hazel Park Neighborhood Enrichment Group warmly welcome you and your family to join us for our annual spaghetti dinner, to celebrate the Renaissance of Hazel Park, to be held at the Hazel Park Recreation Center, 620 West Woodward Heights, Friday, April 8, 2016, from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM. I think that's still on. Dinner will be a choice of meat, of vegetarian and spaghetti, fresh salad, bread, assorted desserts, soft drinks, coffee. $7 for adults, the dollars for children under 10. Grand prize raffle will be dinner for two at Hazel Park's new Mabel Gray Restaurant and two tickets to a Detroit Tickets game. I think that's a really great thing to have, so thank you. Hope to see you there.
Are you selling tickets?
I'm sticking tickets everywhere. Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else send civic announcement? Okay, close civic announcements. Any public questions? Public discussions? Having none, close public discussions. Consider agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 1, 4, and 5.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mayor, for the record, for the library board members here, the two items for the sign change and a couple other things that we had out here are postponed. I believe the City Council would like to have a joint meeting, according to the administration, with you to kind of discuss some of the wherewithal's of the situation.
Or at least deal with it after they've had their meeting.
Exactly.
So that was one thing I think that Jan discussed with some of the members as well.
Thank you.
What's the reason the SMLSA?
We have to have a SMLSA board meeting first. We have to craft the language properly, and the way that the language is crafted today doesn't pass muster, so we need to make sure that that's done properly. We'll have a SMLSA meeting on Friday, craft that language properly, bring that back to you. We may need to have a special meeting next week, so that we can move to get this on the August, this has to go on the August ballot.
Has the City of Wayne had a vote yet?
They have voted and they have approved, but they need to, everybody will need to approve the same way. And SMLSA, the SMLSA Board will put together a language that will allow Wayne to enter with a vote of all of the people, and will also protect the existing members, should they not do so.
Yeah, no, their 14 mills then will go before their residents, but it has to go before ours and East Point's too. Even though we've already got ours, we, we, we still have to put that out there and everybody has to vote again. But this will allow then, the City of Wayne, to go ahead and levy 14 mills.
That's how crazy this law is. It says that it has to be across the entire district, so we have to vote to allow them to levy their mills in Wayne.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
But we're going to structure it in such a way that the resolution will say that if they don't pass it, East Point and Hazel Park will not drag them in. So as part of a condition of membership, they have got to pass it with over a 50% vote. I don't see why the residents of Hazel Park aren't going to say, fine, yes, we want to help our sister community, the City of Wayne, join our authority. So our fire departments are already working together, and I'm sure they will do an education campaign. We will do the same as well, explaining to people why all three communities have to vote to do this. But on the other hand, we're not, there's no negative impact to us.
It's just helping out Wayne. Wayne will be able to then go ahead and levy the 14 mills and continue on with their fire service.
How extensive is our education process going to be for our residents? They may not understand the whole ins and outs of the whole SMLSA package that we put together before.
Right. But again, like I said, I think we have more than enough, I think we have more than enough time to explain this to our residents. I mean, all we can do is do the best that we can do. This time, this doesn't include any, you know, we're not asking our residents to pay any more money, we're only saying, you have to vote to allow Wayne to come into our authority, because that's the way the statute works. The statute says that the mills have to be approved by a majority of voters across.
Do we have to pass 14 mills again?
No.
Or do we just allow?
We have our mills.
I know we have our mills, but we just have to make a motion, basically a ballot initiative, to allow them to be a part of our.
No. You have to have a ballot issue that allows for all the cities to levy 14 mills. We already have it here, okay? Wayne, you need to, all members of the authority need to vote to allow it. So it has to pass by a majority.
Do we have to pass 14 mills again? Or do we just allow?
We have our mills.
I know we have our mills, but we just have to make a motion, basically a ballot initiative to allow them to be a part of our.
No. You have to have a ballot issue that allows for all the cities to levy 14 mills. We already have it here, okay? Wayne, you need to, all members of the authority need to vote to allow it. So it has to pass by a majority of voters. If Wayne passes it, but Hazel Park and East Point turn it down, Wayne cannot join. So there's, that's how the, that's how the statute works. Again, we had to, this, this happened because your legislature.
Yeah, I know.
And it's.
And it's in the caps that the cities have on.
Right.
Yeah, I know. We've dealt with.
This was us being creative and we are trying to be creative to help the City of Wayne because if we do not give the City of Wayne this option, uh, the City of Wayne will go under. So East Point and Hazel Park are sending the City of Wayne a lifeline. And I would hope that they would do the same for us. It costs us nothing, it costs our residents nothing. Just like East Point and Hazel Park. Wayne levies, Wayne keeps what Wayne levies, just like Hazel Park keeps what Hazel Park levies.
Can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
In 20 years, we have to go to renew this whole SMLSA package if, if need be, for maybe a lesser amount.
It won't be, but.
Does it or does it not become an issue to have? Say we wanna have another city join or another city at one time. We have one of, but five or the next five years.
Correct, all of those.
It's gonna be a more cumbersome burden to get all those cities to pass at that, at that ratio.
There are all kinds of things.
To pass this without, if, say, one city doesn't educate their residents as well as we do, you know what I'm saying?
There are all kinds of things that we can do. We could form an entirely new authority, or we could go back to it just being East Point if another city joins. I mean, look, we pass our millages historically by overwhelming amounts. We're the dance partner that everybody wants to dance with. So we're not gonna have a difficult time finding another partner to form SMLSA or SMLSA II or whatever.
I just wanted to bring that into light.
That is a true statement.
You also have to look at, at, you know, when these other municipalities go down, when they go under, it affects everybody.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
So, you know, we wanna be a good neighbor and help them out and partner with them because at this point, there is no negatives for us whatsoever.
There is no negatives for us whatsoever.
Yeah, Chrissy.
Yes.
I have a question. And that is, uh, when we passed the SMLSA proposal last year, it was for 20 years. Now, Wayne, if they pass it this year, will it be for 20 years?
It will be for the remainder of our 20-year term.
19 or whatever.
19 or 18 years, correct.
And they could not have anything but the 14 mills. It has to be.
It has to be 14 mills. 14 mills has to be left across. Now, like us, they're probably going to lower their operating mills, uh, they're gonna lower another millage like we lowered another millage. Uh, but again, uh, that's up to them as long as they levy 14. East Point didn't reduce theirs at all. They just took the whole 14, kept their whole special and kept all their.
They needed more.
Yeah, but they needed more. And again, this is a hot topic. You may see other, uh, other communities that are going to want to jump on board with this as well.
Right.
Trying to get them to partner with somebody else, to find somebody else, but they're.
There's no one, at this point in time, there, there's nobody that we can partner them up with in time, that they can create the authority and jump through all of those hoops that will enable them to get something on the August ballot in time to save themselves. Because they're gonna have to get it on the August ballot, they're gonna have to levy the first tax that they have, uh, for the winter taxes and then go back to the, the spring following year. So they're, they're under the gun. If they don't do something, they're facing.
You're gonna bring it back to us the next council.
I will. We may have to have a special.
We have a full discussion at that time.
We may have to have a special probably next week so we can get this done quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
We passed, we passed the public discussion.
Passed public discussion.
There was a, uh, we had an item for the library on here and it was on.
Wait a minute.
Yes, it's been deleted.
The board did.
Administration. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. We've had, we've been approached by several board members. Apparently, the board is going to meet on this, uh, again, so.
We had four of us that passed it.
Yes, but there's. Apparently, the library board is interested in voting again on this issue.
Well, I've not had two of them call.
Right. Well, they have approached us, so. No. Not at all.
Okay. Administrative report?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, the administration recommends approval of item 1, approving District Court bond resolution. Uh, this will allow the, uh, 43rd District Court, Hazel Park Division, through its funding unit, the City of Hazel Park, to bond for, uh, $2.3 million to do expansion to the District Court portion of the City of Hazel Park City Hall. Uh, in addition to that, uh, there will be a reskining of the entire, uh, City Hall so that we can finally relieve ourselves of the crumbling green glass that has been deteriorated for well over 35 years.
And again, not one penny of the tax.
And this is, uh, District Court Judge, uh, Gettler has come up with a plan that will have the court fully funding all of these, uh, renovations without costing the taxpayers a nickel.
Mayor Chrissy?
Yes.
I move that we pass the District Court Bond Resolution as presented.
Support with discussion.
Yes.
I, uh, I'm reading through this. I was just, uh, item 21, bond insurance. Is that something we are going to purchase? Do you think it's something we need?
Yeah, we purchase bond insurance, don't we? Yep.
Yes. We have our bond consultant, the, uh, highly esteemed Ryan Benzinski of Benzinski and Sons. Uh, or is it now just Ryan Benzinski Incorporated? I don't know.
Thank you, you're too kind, uh, Mr. Manager. But Madam Mayor and, uh, council members, my name is Ryan Benzinski. I'm with Benzinski Company Municipal Finance Advisors. And we have for several years, if not several decades, represented the city in regards to, um, assisting them with going through the bonding process and issuing securities. Unfortunately, the bond attorney who prepared this resolution tonight was, uh, out on vacation and could not attend. But in regards to the bond insurance, um, that is something that could be purchased at the purchaser's option. It would not be at the expense of the city, uh, which could enhance the credit rating of the bonds thereby lowering, uh, the interest cost that the city would pay. However, that would be more of a, a marketing or retail type of, uh, decision that the potential purchasers would make. And they would pay for that themselves and that is more so that they can go and offer the bonds and maybe get slightly better yields and drum up additional business, which, again, wouldn't cost the city anything, but hopefully would maybe, uh, reduce the interest rate slightly to the, the cost of the city. But again, you won't know that until the bids are open and you're, based on the method of sale we're taking here, you're awarding to the bidder who produces the lowest true interest cost to the city. So it's, somebody could buy it, they may not have the lowest bid, um, or vice versa. But ultimately, whoever produces the lowest bid is who the bonds would be awarded to on, uh, the, the date we open bids.
That's all I had, I was just reading.
Any further questions for Mr. Benzinski? And again, he's right, they have been our bond consultants for forever. His father was our bond consultant back.
I'm all in favor of it, I just, it was a question, and if it was an extra cost, something we need to do, take into consideration.
And I, I will say that Judge Gettler has, uh, done the lion's share of project management for this. I did tell him that I wanted to do this project about as much as I wanted to have a hole drilled into the middle of my forehead. Thanks to my dermatologist, I think that's already started. But, uh, he has kept his word to me and he has done almost all of the project management for this. So I thank him for his efforts on this. I know that he is, uh, excited about seeing his, uh, facilities renovated. I'm excited about getting a new skin for this building. So our police department, when the news shows up, our police station will not look like the, uh, old police station from the post-apocalypse Mad Max movie, uh, back in 1979. So we'll actually have, uh, uh, an exterior that brings us into the 1980s. So, uh, it's been that long. It's actually been that in the 70s. So I think this is, these repairs are needed. Councilman Solomon was on the Municipal Buildings Authority Committee back in the late 1990s when we first, uh, dealt with the, uh, problems with the Michigan Court Administrator's Office identifying deficiencies for, uh, the court areas. And if he wants to speak to that, he can. But I think all of you are aware of it. We were able to successfully fight off, uh, a challenge to consolidate courts a few years ago, which would have cost us, uh, immeasurably more money than the small expenditure that, uh, is being made for these renovations. And the best thing about this is, is he's come up with a way to fund it, that the court will fund this and it will not cost the taxpayers any money. So I think all around, I commend him for his hard work on this issue.
Mayor Chrissy?
Yes.
On the motion, um, if one were to tour district, district courts in the tri-county area, ours would probably be in the bottom one on the list of adequate facilities. Things like juries have to cross in front of accused in order to be seated, so many different things that are wrong. The jury meeting room is anything but private. We need to do this.
Our biggest thing is the court is not handicapped accessible at all.
Pardon?
Our court is not handicapped accessible.
And, and again, the, the.
We have a lot of problems.
It, 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 it really is. And the, the clerks are kind of packed and it's, it's, it, we've always known that the accommodations were inadequate. But again, the interesting thing, and, and Judge Gettler and I have had many discussions about this, the mistake was made when the building was built. I mean, you know, instead of reconfiguring it totally, it wasn't coming in. So instead of biting the bullet and just paying the extra money, they downsized everything by 10% size-wise and they left us with a, a building that isn't right. So, uh, we'll try to address, uh, some of those things, at least in the, uh, the court facilities. Now, I, I've dealt with my own space issues in a different way. I've just reduced the number of employees that we have here in Hazel Park dramatically. So, uh.
Mayor Chrissy?
Yes.
In all fairness, uh, when the building was originally built, we were a municipal court, not a district court. And the vol, the case, the, the case volume was nowhere near what it is now. Small claims were limited then to 5,000. Now I think they're 25,000? What is the limit now?
It's going up on small claims, the District Court civil limitations 25.
Okay, that's what I'm.
The District Court was less.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so there's, there's every reason to do this.
Mayor?
Yes.
With the discussions I had with, uh, Judge Gettler in the past, and we went over the whole plan, he, uh, laid it all out for us, says, all the council people, and laid out his proposal. And I commend him for all that hard work. And we had our questions and we were kinda apprehensive at first and a couple of little issues. But, uh, all in all, we were more concerned of how the bond ring was gonna be and apparently the bond ring is coming in where we liked it to be. And, uh, with his payment schedule of, of arranging this, uh, hopefully everything will work out. Thank you.
If I may, I'd just like to, uh, affirm what you mentioned about the bond rating is true and Standard and Poor's did affirm the city's existing A-plus rating, which is still considered a medium investment grade rating. So, uh, that shows the hard work of the council and the administration.
Considering where we were 10 years ago? We, we've really tried to, uh, put our standards in place and our, and our checking balances with our financial department. And they've done a very nice job with the administration. And that's how, I think that's how we've gotten to this point, along with the court's effort to satisfy the needs of the, uh, quotas and datas that we need to, for the day-to-day operations and, uh, marketing and budgeting. Thank you.
We on number two?
Mayor Chrissy?
Stay a roll call.
I think we need a roll call on that motion.
We'll call the roll.
Okay.
Councilman Solomon?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Webb?
Yes.
Councilman Tietz was excused. Mayor Chrissy.
Yes.
For the recommended mayor, I will say that Judge Gettler did construct his own restroom. So he has, he has always tried to, uh, do things himself to alleviate the size constraints, but this is just, now we have a way to do it. He's, uh, established a consistent revenue stream and I think that, uh, uh, this is the right thing to do.
Well, I think that our court is pretty, kind of, kinda goes along with the size of the, some of the smaller homes that we have in the area. Uh, he probably has 900 square feet at best in there to do everything. It's pretty, it's pretty tight.
He has that much.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Yeah, it is. That's true.
It really is.
This, this will also give us a magistrate room. We'll, we'll also be able to speed up the traffic court and everything else.
Yep. Absolutely. This will help operations dramatically.
Right.
I mean, there may even be a meeting room that we can use once in a while too, if that lasts, so.
Thank you.
Okay, now, uh, number two, approved PC case 1602.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the administration recommends approval of this rezoning. It's gone to the, uh, Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, uh, passed and recommended approval unanimously.
Motion to approve, Mayor. Support. Discussion. Uh, the Planning Commission did, uh, at, at, at long, long lengthy discussions on this whole issue. I think they brought every critique there was for this issue. And to make it work properly, I think it, all questions and, uh, all the wording has been adequately satisfied here. Thank you.
Mayor Chrissy?
Yes.
Question for the administration.
Sure.
Uh, was the vote on the Planning Commission unanimous?
I believe it was unanimous, yes.
Thank you.
And they did ask great questions and they were very involved. We have some planning commissioners here tonight, so.
They did a very good job. I was at the meeting and they did a very fantastic job, uh, going over every angle of this. And they had, they had a lot of concerns and we had concerns as well, and I think they all got answered.
Okay.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Did you wanna add anything?
I just wanted to add, to make sure you guys saw that we amended the original.
Yes, the, the, they, they did amend the original. We've taken Carlisle Street out of that. That's not really consistent with what we were attempting to do anyways, although it was in the original land use plan. We were scratching our heads, wondering why that was. And we did have some, uh, concerns expressed by some of the residents in the community and their concerns were valid. There's no reason for us to do that.
Roll call.
Councilman Webb?
Yes.
Councilman Kuro?
Yes.
Councilman Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor Chrissy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Lords and Commissions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The administration respectfully requests the appointment of Michael Pierce to the Arts Council.
Some of.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
He's been showing up to the meetings anyway, so.
Yes, he has.
Probably let him vote.
Want to put him to work.
Thank you very much.
Put him to work, if you're out there watching.
Uh, tabled items?
No tabled items, madam.
New businesses?
that we in the past have been approved and the bidding's been awarded, what is the, what is the holdup with some of these besides the...
Disconnects.
Disconnects?
Disconnects.
Okay, I know that we're, I know it's hard to get the contract...
These are, these are disconnects, we are having a problem with disconnects, there is one house that is the bane of my existence on Bernard Street, that I'm going to go knock down myself, I think disconnect, be damned, I'm so sick of...
I guess I was looking at that property on Jenner, the yellow...
That's part of it too.
As well, and a couple other ones.
Yep, we just got the disconnects on that, or...
There was a few of them, that's okay, I got your answer.
Yep.
Just let me know, I'll, well, I'll keep in touch.
For, for the record, what we're talking about when I say disconnects is that we have to get disconnects from the electrical utilities and the natural gas utilities before we can tear down a home for obvious safety reasons, and sometimes those disconnects take us a long time to get, so...
Mayor Parisi?
Progressing.
Yes.
Under new business, uh, our Hazel Park High School basketball team has, for the first time in 20 years, won a league championship.
Wow.
And I think that is really nota, notable and remarkable, and I would move that at our next council meeting, we have a resolution and copies of which be presented to the coaches and the team members and that they be invited to our next council meeting.
Good idea.
Sir, the Administration will be happy to contact the Superintendent and, and make that invitation, I think that's a great thing.
There was a motion.
Support.
One in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor and Council, uh, first off, I just want to thank, uh, members of the Administration who contributed and helped to what I consider a very successful Promise Zone Dinner. Um, we got, a, a number of our staff helped chip in and do a great job over at the Rec Center, and I want to thank them publicly for their efforts, and also, obviously, the, uh, the Promise Zone for putting on a great, um, dinner. Also, just a reminder, Congress for New Urbanism will be here April 12th through 14th, that is a Tuesday through a Thursday, uh, most of the work will be done on the Tuesday and the Wednesday, they're doing their final presentation on a Thursday, we have a meeting with them, a teleconference with them on Thursday, so I will have more details provided to you in the LL packet, and I will be putting it all on the website and Facebook as well because we want participation from business owners, stakeholders, public officials, and residents.
What was the date again, Jeff?
April 12th through the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, communications from Department heads, anymore? Okay, thank you. Communications from City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to echo what Jeff Campbell said about the Promise Zone Dinner, I think that it was a huge success, we had, uh, a great turnout and, uh, we raised a good amount of money for the Promise Zone. I want to extend, pardon me, I want to extend a, a special thank you to the high school students and recent graduates that showed up to speak there, and a, an extra special thank you to, uh, the players from Little Shop of Horrors who did a fantastic job doing a few acts of their play. I encourage all of you to go and see Little Shop of Horrors at the high school auditorium, I, I don't have the dates in front of me, but we'll get them, we'll post them on the web...
This Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
This Thursday, Friday and Saturday, there you go, Councilman Webb knows them, uh, go out and see that performance, they, the kids were just great, they did a fantastic job, I enjoyed it so very much, and I encourage everybody to go and see it. Uh, again, we already thanked Jen Jackson, she did a very nice job on the display cases. Uh, I want to thank Amy Croupy, uh, for the good cooperation that we are enjoying between the city and the schools. I had an opportunity to participate on a panel with Dr. Croupy at the schools on Saturday morning where she held a strategic planning session with stakeholders and parents and teachers to talk about how that we can make the Hazel Park School District a better school district. And, uh, I was so very pleased, uh, with the residents that I had a chance to spend time with at the different focus groups, they were excited, uh, about the school system and how they can make it better, and they also had very complimentary things to say about the City of Hazel Park and the direction that we're heading. So, I think this bodes well for our city's future, this is really all about teamwork and, and, uh, having a vision, and all of us working together, pulling in the same direction to make that happening. It's, uh, it's, it's refreshing, uh, to be able to have that kind of cooperation with the schools. So, I think that's all that I have. Oh, one thing I wanted to address as well, too, there were, uh, some comments made about parking, uh, on Street Maintenance Day, and I want everyone to remember that Street Maintenance Day is not just about street sweeping, but that is a day that we use to do, uh, maintenance on streets in a specific area. We may not be doing any maintenance on your specific street, but we do do maintenance possibly in other areas. We use street maintenance for a variety of reasons, we make water main repairs on the days that there are street maintenance days, we do cement repairs on those days, we trim trees when there are those days, doesn't mean that we're going to trim a tree or do something like that every week in your street. Also, another important reason to have no parking is, uh, the elimination of junk vehicles on our streets. When we implemented this, uh, we took off over 200 junk vehicles from the streets of Hazel Park. One of them had a tree growing through the engine block, it was really cool. So, this pride, this program really helps us curtail, uh, junk vehicles. I think that, along with keeping streets clean for street sweeping, uh, and we have a new street sweeping program, so you will not go more than, uh, two weeks, three at the most if it's pouring rain without getting your street swept, we will never run into the program again where some area didn't get their street swept for several months. So, we have revamped that program, you're going to see regular street sweeping this year, and we have two street sweepers right now that are functioning, right now they are doing, uh, the major streets first, they will be moving to the secondary streets, and we hope to, uh, start on the city before the end of this month. We hope to have regular street sweeping program implemented in April, as always, it's not, I had, saw one resident say, "Well, it's just about the money." It's not about the money, that's why the Administration recommended and Council reduced the fee to $15 if you pay it within the first three days of getting the ticket. For the first several years, it was a $30 ticket, no matter when you paid it. This is not about the money, this is about us wanting to keep the streets clear. Former Chief Niedermeyer always recommended, uh, getting rid of junk vehicles on the streets and keeping, uh, on-street parking to a minimum, he felt that that was one of the most important things that we could do, uh, to reduce crime. He always recommended to me that we should adopt something like the City of Berkeley has where they ban parking, you know, between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM or something every night. I don't think that our people in Hazel Park have sufficient private parking for us to be able to do something like that, they need the on-street parking. But, to have a few hours every week where you keep the vehicles off just to enable that the streets get clean and that we keep those junk vehicles off our streets, I, I think the, uh, positives outweigh the negatives. When this was originally implemented, I was against it, this was a baby of Jack Lloyd, I didn't want to mess with this nonsense, but I will tell you that I have come to support it and believe that this was the right thing to do. So, if anybody has any questions about that, please contact my office, I'll be happy to discuss it with you. It's about safety, it's about keeping our streets clean, it's about, uh, enabling us to keep junk vehicles that are gross and unsightly, and you wouldn't believe the things that we took off the street when this program was implemented. So, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
I have nothing either, Jan.
Thank you. Um, okay. Communications from Mayor and Council?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The weather is unusually, unseasonably nice lately, and I would remind everybody to please, please, please watch out for the bicyclists. A friend of mine was hit in the parking lot, well, no, I'm sorry, he was not hit, he decided to swerve, bust his eggs, gets a black eye, and the driver didn't stop. So, please watch out for the bicyclists. It was at night and he had his lights on, but, he's okay, a broken dozen eggs. Um, just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, welcome, Michael Pierce for the Arts Council, and was wondering, did we need an exec session later?
We do need a short exec session.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Tom Selman?
Thank you, Mayor Parisi.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you to all of the folks that came out this evening, and, uh, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone in Hazel Park. I would encourage you all to be very safe, uh, in past years on St. Patrick's Day, we have lost streetlights and had some other unfortunate things happen.
Three streetlights in one night.
And we encourage everyone to, uh, to be moderate or get someone else to drive you. Um, I also have a question for the Administration, uh, when does yard waste pickup begin?
Uh, first Monday in April.
Okay. And, uh, another question on cable, for the last several days on WOW, uh, and, which is my, my cable provider, all I get is the divided screen with the City Hall entrance showing WOW 10 and Comcast 15, and I was not getting the alternative announcements. Uh, our new equipment, now accommodate that better?
We hope so, if, uh, we'll, we'll track it down and find out why that is.
That's all I have, thank you, Mayor Parisi. Oh, no. If you love someone, tell them so, if you have children, tell them that you love them and hug them every day. Now I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Well, I thought the State of the City address was, was a really good, it turned out very well, and I had a lot of fun, uh, reading books at the elementary school, and, um, the strategic, strategic plan at the high school, we were there too, so, we're not, we, we don't sit all the time, we, we have fun and we enjoy it, and, um, it's a great thing. I think so.
Mayor Parisi?
Yes.
Councilman Webb?
Let her finish, she's doing...
Okay.
Go ahead.
You're done?
Yeah.
I just did, didn't want to interrupt you, you were doing something.
Oh, no, that was fine, yeah, thank you.
Um, I just want to say, thanks for coming out this evening, and, uh, I hope everybody has, has enjoyed the nice weather, and I know everybody's got a little bit of touch of the flu, I, sure, I do, I do right now. But, have a safe and happy St. Patrick's Day, and have a very merry and happy Easter, it's just around the corner, it's sneaking right up on us, folks. And, uh, if you have any questions for the City Hall Administration, feel free to give them a call, the numbers should be listed on the new cable channel that we have and all this new equipment, the sound system's working out quite well, I hope that you at home is also able to hear it. If you have any complaints about our sound system, please let, uh, our Administration know, because we'd like to know as well. Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to go to exec session for...
Personnel matters.
Personnel matters, thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
(inaudible).
Only dizzy, verbal instructions.
(inaudible).
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 (inaudible).